I've been getting my own.
Good evening. This eighty-eighth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Our members of the council, due to our state and nation's social media setting, I will recognize you by calling with name and saying that you have the floor. Now, would ever please do on me. The next invocation will be delivered by Pastor Damon Dorsey of Walk by Faith Ministries. Following the invocation, we will have the pleasure of allegiance. Pastor?
God, we want to come first and foremost saying thank you. Thank you for the opportunity just to be able to serve. God, we thank you for another chance. We thank you for a new day. We thank you for new mercy. God, it's in this moment that while we're thanking you, we want to thank you for everything before we ask you for anything, but we also want to ask for something. God, I pray that you just continue to bless God and keep each member of this council, bless them in their decision-making, bless them as they go forward, not just this day, but every day. God, cover our city, cover our state as we try to combat this COVID. God, continue to bless God and keep our medical workers, everybody that's trying to keep everyone safe. God, it's right now that we pray specifically for Baltimore City. God, we know we have issues, but I thank you for each one of these members who are dedicating themselves to be able to fix all of these issues. From Bentlow to Boston Street, from Cold Spring to Cherry Hill, from Drew Hill to Downey Hill, I pray that you just continue to give them the wisdom and guidance needed to be able to do what it is to help this city move forward. Give them all the faith of Abraham, the leadership of Moses, the boldness of Joshua, the courage of Esther, the strength of David, and the wisdom of Solomon. God, I truly believe that I have seen and is having heard what you have in store for the great city of Baltimore. Now, please bless this meeting, every thought they have, every word they say. I pray it's acceptable in your sight. Bless us all and keep us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And let me wish you a early happy birthday tomorrow, so have a blessed birthday as well.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for allowing us to serve. God bless you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Tonight's showcase will be delivered by Tony Lawson, Executive Director of the B- org. Tony, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tony Lawson, and I am the founder and Executive Director of the B- org. Um, I am hoping I have the ability to share my screen with you all because I do have a few slides prepared.
You do?
I do. Okay, great. Let me connect. And are you all able to see my screen? No?
Yeah.
Okay. One second. Y'all know how this WebEx virtual life we're living. Y'all know how that goes. Okay. How about now?
Now we can.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. So, I like to start off with a little story that I call Leila's stories. Um, about, hmm, it's been about six years now. Leila, who was a nice young lady, a wonderful family friend of ours, um, she was struggling a little bit with the transition to middle school. And I asked her, I said, "Leila, well, what are you doing? Have you been involved? Have you reached out to any of your teachers for any extra help? Have you made any new friends? Have you joined any clubs?" And just like any teenager, she kind of just blew me off like, "Ugh, ugh," whatever. And I said, "Well, Leila, you always wanted to be an actress. I hear your school has a wonderful drama program, and, you know, have you checked out the drama team?" And she's like, "Eh, no." So, make a long story short, Leila goes on to tell me that no one in Baltimore ever makes it. And from that point on, my heart broke that for her, because a young person to have so many dreams could be so defeated just by the circumstances of their environment, and I just had to take it upon myself to do something about it. Um, and so, from that conversation with Leila, the B- org was born in 2014. Um, it's just a little bit about me. I am a scientist by education. I am originally from Prince George County, and I made my way to Baltimore, um, by way of Tulsa University. I have a degree in biotechnology as well as a degree in biology. I also obtained my graduate degree while being in Baltimore as well. So, I like to say Baltimore is now my second home. Um, I live here, I work here, I worship here, and most importantly, I give back to the youth in this community. So, the B- org was formed in 2014. Our mission is to nurture youth to live above their socially imposed limitations, to really develop their character, their talent, and their leadership, allowing them to go beyond a dream and achieve remarkable excellence. Whatever that dream is, we want to be able to focus in on that, give them the ability to foster all of those skills necessary to be successful in college and beyond college. If college is not for them, we want them to be able to, um, build up skills to give them the opportunities to be a successful citizen in the community. Our focus, um, primarily lies in areas of social and emotional learning, STEM enrichment, and college and career readiness. To date, we have connected with eighty volunteers to help push our mission forward. We've served nearly four hundred and fifty youth across the Baltimore region, which we are very, very excited about. Um, we have just about an eighty-five percent average increase in all of our program outcome areas. We measure confidence, we measure leadership ability, and we measure their positive, um, positive behaviors. We've had an opportunity to partner with fifty-five organizations and, most notably, those including Baltimore City Public Schools. We're in about seven Baltimore City Public Schools, um, since our founding. Some of our funders, um, we have a really large support from the NEE Chastity Foundation. I've had an opportunity to participate in their, um, Young Leaders, Baltimore Young Leaders Development Program. They're also one of our good funders. Um, we have had support recently from the T. Rowe Price Foundation. I don't know if you all saw, um, an article, technically last week, but the headline is "Four Black-Led Organizations Have Come Together to Build Impact, Um, in Capacity." And that article was based on our support from the T. Rowe Price Foundation. They have pledged eighty thousand dollars over the next three years, um, to help us, uh, to help us find a chief development officer position, um, in partnership with B-360, I Am Mentality, as well as, um, Mid-Tony Mentors and our profits. Uh, we also get great support from the Johns Hopkins University, as well as the Weinberg Foundation. I had an opportunity to, um, be a part of the 2019 Johns Hopkins Social Innovation Lab, and I am also currently a Baltimore Core Fellow. Our focus, again, is on social and emotional learning. So, our goal is to be able to teach our youth those soft skills, as we like to refer to them, um, anything in the areas of wellness, health, and then to be more socially aware as well as, um, more self-aware, um, building up their leadership development skills, as well as, um, we're really big on wellness. We do that by way of after-school enrichment programs, um, Character Education pop-ups, as well as leadership labs. We take a large focus on STEM programming as well. Um, we have a program right now that's called Be Virtual, but it is on hold due to COVID. I'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, as well as a program called The Food Playground, which we are really excited about, which is in partnership with, uh, the girl, the ladies at Black Girls Cook. Um, and that program teaches young ladies, um, young girls, adolescent girls of color in the city how to cook through using STEM principles. So, daily, we go through activities, um, focusing on like emulsions or acids and bases, your basic kitchen chemistry, to teach them how to cook using those STEM principles, enriching also some of those STEM concepts that they are learning on a daily basis in school. Uh, we also have a program that is called Be College Ready, where our volunteers, our board members, our student supporters, work hand-in-hand with young people, their families, um, to identify some colleges that they may be interested in attending, as well as financial aid opportunities, and then walking hand-in-hand with them from the college application process, through the financial aid process, through the full application process, to, um, hopefully a successful enrollment and matriculation into a college of their choice. As I mentioned, Be Virtual, this is our pride and joy, um, but again, one of the programs that is on hold right now due to COVID. So, Be Virtual is a youth-built virtual reality technology and curriculum for social and emotional learning development. So, this program allows, which we patented it, uh, with a group of kids from coding at schools, and was hopefully going to be in Forest Park, um, during this school year, but COVID kind of shut us down. Um, the goal of the program is to teach, um, use how-to code for virtual reality, um, and have them actually code our FBL learning curriculum. So, the curriculum that we actually use in schools with our students, um, by creating it and making it virtual and VR, if you guys have seen these little trendy VR things that the young men is wearing here, it increases their content retention rate. It makes them really feel like they're in the scenario when we're doing scenario-based learning, and the goal is to be able to have our high school students learn to code that and create that curriculum, giving them valuable workforce development skills, um, that will put them just a step ahead of others, um, entering, that are just entering that field. Um, it makes them more employable, and it gives them, again, that leg up to be able to attain gainful employment, um, but then also allowing them to be end-users of the technology, um, to test it out and get some of those FBL skills that help them be more prepared for college and the workplace. Um, our goal is to be able to transition this to a virtual program, um, next school year, because it doesn't look like we're going back to school anytime soon, um, but really being able to get this technology in the hands of some of our older youth, um, to teach them those valuable skills. Um, so, with, on topic with COVID, we have been able to pivot a little bit, um, and be able to offer some virtual programs, um, to the girls in our Girls' Empowerment Academy. We've been sending out self-care boxes, as well as doing weekly check-ins with them. Uh, we just finished our first cohort of Amplify Your Voice, which is a social justice workshop, um, where they learn social justice through the art of spoken word. Uh, we have also, uh, we're running two cohorts of The Food Playground right now, um, which is our STEM and culinary arts program, which is completely virtual. So, the girls in our program, they get a weekly grocery delivery from us, as well as, um, one STEM kit or STEM and culinary kit, which is almost outfitted with every, um, kitchen appliance tool that you would need to make a meal, and with their time with us, they are learning, they're learning ways and measures, they're learning volume, acids and bases, emulsions. They make anything from ice cream in a bag to chicken tenders and vegetables, um, baked sesame chicken for their family. So, this has been a great opportunity for students and families that may be, um, struggling a little bit to get some resources and food into their hands, for us to be able to deliver some fresh produce, fresh groceries to them, and have their, um, their children to actually prepare for, for the kids. Um, we just finished a two-week cycle of this, and the feedback that we've gotten so far from the kids has been amazing, um, and we are looking forward to another cohort of that. Um, and then lastly, we are continuing with our Character Education, uh, workshops. Uh, we're currently at a couple of sites with the Y, um, working with second and fifth graders, focusing on leadership development. We're doing a lot of training for parents around, um, social and emotional wellness, uh, stress relief, and, um, conversations on, uh, race, having conversations on race with children, just given the current circumstances of things that are happening today. Um, and that's pretty much it for us. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, we look forward to connecting with members, uh, of the council or just other constituents in your district, your areas, um, to be able to just continue to push out our work, um, get more youth involved in our programming. We definitely had lots of, um, kits and programming to go around for the summer, especially operating virtually. My home looks like Amazon, and we are literally ready to push this, um, these kits and information to the kids. But yes, feel free to email me directly, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions here today.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, roll call. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott.
President.
Councilman Cohen.
President.
Councilwoman Price.
President.
Councilman Dorsey.
Here.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman Schleifer.
Here.
Vice President Middleton.
Present.
Councilman Pinkett.
Present.
Councilman Burnett.
Present.
Block.
Present.
Councilman Rieser.
Present.
Councilman Costello.
Present.
Councilman St. Councilwoman Sneed.
Here.
I'm here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Mr. President.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Councilman Stokes just, uh, called. He said he was having some technical issues, but that he'll be walking back in in a moment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the July, uh, thirteenth, twenty-twenty proceedings are in the council members inbox.
Well, by the Jackson, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted. A bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two and three of your agenda. Executive nomination.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-seven-seven, Melody, Melody Hahn-Hangler, Member Ethics Board, District Eleven.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-seven-eight, Levi S. Vaslow, Member Civilian Review Board, District Five.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
The City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-five-six-three Charter Amendment, Disposition of City-Owned Real Estate, for the purpose of amending the city charter to repeal the city's general authority to dispose of city-owned real property at private sale, conforming and clarifying related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors: Schleifer, Henry, Sneed.
Chair recognizes Councilman Sackler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this bill is about one word, and that is private. City-owned buildings should never be sold at a private sale. We have approximately six hundred thousand, um, people in Baltimore City. Uh, we're all stakeholders, and just like I mentioned at our lunch today, we would all be caught by surprise if we came into City Hall one day to find out that the mayor sold City Hall on a private sale. Uh, so too, uh, neighborhoods are quite concerned when they too find out that properties in their communities are sold at private sales. We do not benefit at all, uh, by having these, uh, sales done in a private manner. Uh, we're all stakeholders, and we should all be, um, aware of, of these, um, of these sales. At the end of the day, um, it is up to the mayor, and that will stay this way. Uh, but the, the way things have been done, uh, for generations before us, the status quo, um, is not what we should be doing. We need to, we need to change that, uh, and start having transparent and accountable, uh, deal of sales that go through, um, as opposed to city-owned buildings. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Equity Instructive Committee.
Mr. President? Sorry. I have been asked to be listed as a co-sponsor, but I'm not listed on the agenda.
Oh, all right. Please, uh, note, Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to record that Councilman Stokes is present. Uh, City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-five-six-four Urban Renewal Middle East Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Middle East to modify certain land uses allowed in the plan to correct, clarify, and conform certain provisions and references in the plan to those in the current Baltimore City zoning code, to replace Appendix B with new Appendix B, to delete Appendix E in its entirety, to remove certain properties from the list of appendices A, C, and D, and to remove certain other properties located within the renewal area, to replace the exhibits with new exhibits to reflect the changes in the plan, and to modify the boundaries of the plan to reflect the removal of certain properties as shown on the new exhibits, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of these, of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Sneed.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, um, Council President. Uh, this was just, I, we updated some of the properties to take them off, um, that had been updated, um, that had been renovated, as well as, um, some community members in the care, in the care community got together and decided that they no longer wanted to be, uh, in this urban renewal plan. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-five-six-five Urban Renewal Park Heights Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Park Heights to amend certain exhibits to reflect the change of zoning upon approval by separate ordinance for the properties known as, known as thirty-two fifteen West Belvedere Avenue, thirty-three seventeen to thirty-three twenty-three West Belvedere Avenue, fifty-one oh-one to fifty-one oh-three Denmore Avenue, fifty-one hundred Denmore Avenue, and block forty-five eighty, lots zero-three eight, zero-three eight, and zero-three nine to zero-five-five, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Middleton.
Chair recognizes Councilman, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I apologize for not attending the luncheon today. Uh, uh, NACO had their, of course, uh, conferences have been canceled, and NACO had their business meeting today, and, um, I was renominated, by the way, to, uh, be on the board, uh, the executive board for NACO, representing Baltimore City, so that, uh, position will continue. Um, I'm gonna just talk about both of these bills together, because the one right after this is, uh, they both work together. So, if you're familiar with Park Heights, uh, this is property of the Park West Medical Center Health System that has been on their property for close to, um, definitely over forty-five years, close to fifty years. The chair of the board of Park West was, um, Ms. Janie Gier, which was a very strong leader in Park Heights, a, a registered nurse, uh, lived in the Silvern Community on Woodland Avenue. She was just a strong advocate of that facility, and it's still going strong. They have a couple other locations, um, within Park Heights, um, but this is property that they own, that they are, uh, now going to, um, develop and expand their main headquarters. Um, and as part of the process, we're going to, uh, they had to, uh, uh, get approval and amend the Park Heights Urban Renewal Plan, and then also, uh, I have to do some, uh, rezoning. Uh, that facility has been a community-based healthcare facility, and also, they provide dental services. They were the first ones to step up to, uh, work with people that, um, were tested positive for HIV and AIDS, and they continue to still do that. They also, for years, have been working, we now, uh, talk about trauma and things moving forward with trauma. They have a wonderful program that they have always, um, helped students that had trouble in basically, um, high school, certain, uh, mental health issues, and helped them to graduate, and then they have their, every year, they have their own graduation with those particular students, and it's anywhere from, uh, twenty to forty students that they graduate every year, and they all had certain, you know, um, problems that interfered with their education, and that program still moves. So, they are a strong force within the Park Heights community, and, uh, we definitely want to keep those things moving. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-five-six-six, Rezoning Thirty-two fifteen West Belvedere Avenue, thirty-three seventeen to thirty-three twenty-three West Belvedere Avenue, fifty-one oh-one to fifty-one oh-three Denmore Avenue, fifty-one hundred Denmore Avenue, and block forty-five eighty, lots zero-three eight, and zero-three nine to zero-five-five, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as thirty-two fifteen West Belvedere Avenue, thirty-three seventeen to thirty-three twenty-three West Belvedere Avenue, fifty-one oh-one to fifty-one oh-three Denmore Avenue, fifty-one hundred Denmore Avenue, and block forty-five eighty, lots zero-three eight and zero-three nine to zero-five-five, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the R-six zoning district to the OR-one zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Middleton.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, Vice President.
And again, this is just the, the rezoning piece that goes along with the, um, changes in the urban renewal plan, and the community is looking forward to this expansion of Park West Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-five-six-seven, Rezoning Four Zero Seven Benning House Road, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Four Zero Seven Benning House Road, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the R-three zoning district to the OR-one zoning district. Sponsor, Henry.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is correcting an error. Uh, the property had been used as a home office for a number of years, and by moving it back to the, uh, OR, moving it to the OR category from the R category, uh, the adjacent, uh, food incubator will be able to, uh, use it also as part of this business. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-five-six-eight, Planned Unit Development Amendment, Stadium Place, for the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Stadium Place Planned Unit Development. Sponsor, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Um, you know this area as Orioles Park in the good old days, when it was Memorial Stadium. Um, we miss it still, but we have a great, great successor, two of them. One is Jedco, which is now serving more than four hundred, uh, senior citizens in apartments, uh, affordable apartments, and it's a great home for them and a great place, um, for the rest of us to, um, recreate and, and enjoy ourselves. Also, on the other side of the, uh, field is the Weinberg YMCA, and most of the amendments that are introduced this evening are to help the Y, the Weinberg Y, increase its service to families and to young children. They're building a, uh, pre-elementary, pre, uh, elementary building, um, near Ellersley Avenue, so that they can serve more children in their daycare programs, and, uh, they're even building a, uh, small room with restrooms, because so many people are using this area now for athletics, as well as for, uh,
for athletics as well as for playground use. So, we are looking forward that Gilchrist is coming here, but it's already been made part of the urban renewal plan. And we're very excited and pleased, and the neighborhood's been very involved in learning about the changes that will come, all positive with this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five six nine Street Harassment Advisory Commission. For the purpose of establishing Street Harassment Advisory Commission, providing for the commission's composition, terms of office, officers, meetings, forums, and rules of procedure, establishing the general purposes and specific duties of the Street Harassment Advisory Commission, defining certain terms, requiring certain city agencies to adopt model policy and training materials developed by the Street Harassment Advisory Commission, and generally relating to the Street Harassment Advisory Commission. Sponsors, Snead, Bullock, Dorsey, Henry, Burnett.
Please add Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Clark as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Council President. There has been talk about us going back to normal after COVID- nineteen, and I'm like, something that we shouldn't go back to normal to, and this is one of the things. This normal of street harassment that some of us as women may have encountered just walking down the street. And so, Baltimore's official policy to make streets safer and more accessible for all bus riders, bike riders, pedestrians, and car users, and people walking is something that I want to see changed. We must also address our experience on the street. So, in two thousand and nineteen, it was found that seventy-one percent of women reported experience harassment in public. And that's not in the workplace, that's not on their jobs, just walking down the street. And so, it is not just women who are experiencing it, but members of the LGBT community as well. Many of us are used to it, we accept it as normal, but we really should not. Other cities have taken action. In two thousand and seventeen, the District of Columbia, their city council passed the Street Harassment Prevention Act. This created an advisory committee on street harassment, which brings together eight members of the city government and nine members of the public, who represent organizations that conduct advocacy and provide direct services. So, I want to follow DC's model in shifting our cultural perceptions of street harassment through messaging and community organizing, and not through punishment, but making sure that people know that it's unacceptable. This is the way that we'll work with our communities and the Health Commissioner, and we'll go on and hopefully make our streets safer for all people, and especially women in Baltimore City. So, I just want to thank my colleagues for co-sponsoring the bill and look forward to getting this passed through council. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Resolution is to be interviewed.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero two four zero R Request for State Action, November twenty twenty mail-in election. For the purpose of requesting that Governor Hogan make the November election a mail-in election with the option of election day in-person voting rather than regular in-person voting. Sponsors, Burnett, Cohen, Henry, Clark, Snead, Reisinger, Schleifer, Bullock, Dorsey, Middleton, McCray.
Please add Council President, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Stokes as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Last week, we held a hearing in a less than investigation committee to both look back at the June second primary election and in conversation with staff from the Maryland State Board of Elections as well as the Baltimore City Board of Elections. It was very clear from the hearing that while there's a tremendous amount of work to do to get ready for the November election, that what is being proposed, to have a hybrid election, is not the best course of action, both from a public health and public safety perspective in protecting the staff and volunteers who help run elections, as well as our constituents who will be coming out to vote in November. So, calling for a all-mail-in election, just like we had in June, or primarily Maryland election like we had in June, is both a public health perspective and as a public safety perspective for our constituents. And so, looking for support, and I would actually like to make a motion to suspend the rules for immediate adoption, Mr. President.
Before you do that, Mr. Councilman, I just want to make a comment based on what we heard last week. We know that despite having many, many, many issues with the election in June, we still had a record turnout, and that we are still, I think, we're getting somewhat lost in this conversation. We are still amidst a global health pandemic that we know seems to be getting worse and not getting better, that we know we are looking down the barrel of a second wave in the fall, as we're going to already be dealing with flu season. We have to be responsible, especially when it comes to people's health, lives, and safety, but also with their most American right, and that's the right to vote. We should be making it easier for people to participate in this democracy, in this most important of elections, not making it harder when people are going to be making decisions that are going to be changing their leadership and selecting their leadership amidst this pandemic and amidst everything that's going on in our city, state, and the country. So, I appreciate you for your leadership on this issue. And without objection, the rules will be suspended. Rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray. Thumbs up, yeah. Councilman Dorsey.
Yeah, I just want to throw my full support behind this. After the hearing last week where the Board of Elections here locally, Armstead Jones, as well as the State Director of Elections, Linda Lamone, pretty much said explicitly, it is impossible to hold the here, to hold the election in the manner prescribed by Governor Hogan, essentially admitting that it is absolutely a plan to set us up for failure. It just can't be done. The people are not there to serve as the election judges. The polling places are not, places are not willing to allow their space to be opened up for this use. It is absolutely a plan for failure. It's doomed from day one, and we need the state to take action to take up another course for an all-mail-in vote and not waste millions of dollars on these, this initial round of mailing. So, I, you know, thank you, Councilwoman Burnett, for putting this resolution forth. I've got my full support. Thank you.
Councilman Henry.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton. Muted, Vice President.
A definite yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Sponsor Burnett.
Yeah.
Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, can I explain my vote?
It's on you, Councilman. You're good.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is extremely rare that I sign on to a resolution calling for state action that support these resolutions. But in this case, I have to say, it is the most ridiculous thing in the world that the governor's proposing to have an in-person election. It is insane. It flies in the face of advice given by health professionals across the country, the state, and the city. It stands to jeopardize our public health. It stands to cripple our small business community. We will be in a situation where we will have massive outbreaks as a result of this decision, which will inevitably lead to additional restrictions on our business community. And it just, it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever why someone will come up with something so reckless. So, yes, I vote yes on this.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Snead.
Yes, and I would like to add to my vote to say that our former mayor wrote an ob-ed in reference to our governor just totally doing things and saying things that are just not true of Baltimore City citizens and some of our elected officials that are working on our behalf. And it just seems like another slap in the face to Baltimore City to make people stand in lines and to put people's health in jeopardy. So, I'm definitely hoping that yes to this vote in that we all can get behind our state officials to get something in the works to make sure that we get a mail-in, um, general, oh gosh, I'm losing my words here, for voting in November. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark.
I was just talking about Stadium Place. There's four hundred-plus senior citizens just in that one location in my district. How in the world are they going to be transported to where to vote? And yet, they have the right to vote. They vote every time. I think every single one there votes. And yet, and the poll is across the street. But again, it's not necessarily a place that can be used. It's a school. It's a school that would be worried about having that used because schools have to eventually open. So, I don't know what happened to the governor here. He was, like, he was doing pretty well here for a while. Something must have happened, and I hope that it will unhappen very, very soon before we waste a lot of money. He knows better than this, and his wife should talk to him and his children about what this is. And, you know, it's not time yet to run for President of the United States.
Councilman Costello, you signed on as a co-sponsor, correct? No, you didn't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The eyes have it. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero two four one R Calling on Comcast to Help Close the Digital Divide in Baltimore. For the purpose of calling on Baltimore City Government to demand Comcast increase download and upload speeds under Internet Essentials Program, extend the free Internet Essentials Program until sixty days beyond the completely opening of public schools, and to open all existing Xfinity Hotspots free to the public for sixty days after the rest of the full restoration of public school. Sponsors, Cohen, Schleifer, Burnett, Snead, Henry, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Please add Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor, Councilman Bullock as a co-sponsor, Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Council President is co-sponsored. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the Baltimore City Council will join our sister cities, Philadelphia and Detroit, in calling on Comcast to help us close the digital divide. Just today, we received the news that Baltimore City Public Schools will be all virtual during the start of next year. It is absolutely critical that every child in our city has access to a digital device and internet with speeds high enough and fast enough to keep them learning on platforms like Google Classrooms. This resolution calls on Comcast to increase its upload and download speeds for the Internet Essentials Program, extend the free Internet Essentials sixty days beyond when schools physically reopen, and also open their hotspots. And let me just say that we appreciate the two free months that Comcast has provided for Internet Essentials. However, that offer does not meet the urgency of this moment. During this global pandemic, we need a bigger and a bolder partnership with Comcast. According to a report from the Abel Foundation, over forty percent of cities, of families in our city lack access to wireline internet. This is a matter of racial justice. The geography of who does and does not have home internet access closely resembles the housing segregation maps from the nineteen forties. Internet in Baltimore has been redlined. I want to thank Councilmember Raquel Castaneda Lopez from Detroit and Councilmember Helen Gim from Philadelphia for introducing matching resolutions in their cities as well. I also want to thank the students of Somos, who have been leading this campaign from the start, and the other members of the Digital Equity Coalition. Young people in Baltimore, Philadelphia, and Detroit, and across our nation deserve and demand a high-quality education. During the pandemic, when so many are suffering and making great sacrifices, Comcast can afford to do more. Our children cannot afford to wait. I move to suspend the rules to move the resolution for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray. Thumbs up means yes. Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Point of information, the agenda said that this was being sent to the Cybersecurity and Emergency Preparedness Committee. Is that a mistake, or do I, am I looking at an outdated document?
The correction is that we're going to get it on.
Okay. And I'm sorry, the reason I'm calling, I'm pointing this out is that there were some specific word, there's some specific wording in the resolution that I was intending to ask the sponsor to address during the committee process. It's some monkey tech stuff about the download speeds. And so, I guess I will vote yes, but I'm wondering if there any, is there any fashion in which we can make a technical correction after we've passed this with immediate adoption?
I think you voted yes, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Councilman, so we are now going to move to the next vote.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello. Thumbs up means yes. Councilman Stokes.
I want to ask a question.
What was yours, Councilman?
I'm sorry.
You're good.
Have we said this, thank you. Have we said this down to, 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 to have efficiency in terms of what's going to happen to do that?
It's just a resolution, it's a ceremonial resolution, Mr. Councilman, and I think you might be having, technically, did everyone else, did the Councilman blur?
Okay.
Yes, it's just a resolution, Councilman Stokes, but I hear your concern.
All right, well, since it's a resolution, yes.
Councilwoman Snead.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
I just wonder who's going to break into Philadelphia and Detroit about these discrepancies in the speed time. I hope it's not me, but I'm voting yes, even with the errors, and hope they'll correct them across the country. And yes, please, Comcast, be part of us all.
Thank you, thank you. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. The consent calendar can be found in Section A at the back of the agenda. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the hearing, of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Committee reports will now move to bills on second reader. Health Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five one zero Trauma-Informed Care Task Force Composition Revision and Clarification.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm having some technical area. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm having some technical area. Okay. All right, uh, the committee held a hearing on Tuesday, July fourteenth. Uh, there are amendments and copies, uh, in everyone's inbox, uh, related to this legislation. Um, and I would like to move the amendments in everyone's email inbox.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you. Uh, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five one two, Res zoning thirteen zero one, please support.
Chair recognizes Councilman Robinson.
Mr. President, I move to hold the bill to next meeting.
Uh, without objection, this bill will be held for one meeting. This bill will be held for one meeting. Mr. Young, you're on mute.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five two five, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling, two dwellings in the R eight zoning district, variance. Three, um, first.
Chair recognizes Councilman Robinson.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the finding of fact will be approved. The finding of fact is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Robinson.
Mr. President, there's no amendments. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Uh, the motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five three run, three one, rezoning, three thousand six, twenty-nine, twenty-six, and twenty-nine, twenty-eight, Gorman Avenue and Block thirty-one eighty-five, Lot forty.
Chair recognizes Councilman Robinson.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the finding of fact, uh, will be approved. Finding of fact are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Robinson.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee.
Madam Vice President, we have to, he has, he has to read, uh.
Oh, you go ahead, uh, Mr. Kaelin.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five two nine, Property Tax, In-Rem Foreclosure and Sale, Vacant and Abandoned Property.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee held a hearing on third, this past Thursday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty. It was, uh, held virtually. Um, there were no amendments and, um, I've moved the bill favorable as amended, I mean, I've moved the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say, all opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Uh, third reader for final passes.
Uh, City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three eight two, Charter Amendment, City Administrator. President Scott. I, I think we should do roll call, Mr. President. President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Right, 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 right.
Oh, roll order. There you go.
We're on third reader. Can you read the, the bill that we're, I didn't hear that. Which bill are we on?
Administrator. City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three eight two, City Charter Amendment, City Administrator. President Scott.
End of order.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Aren't, aren't we on third reader?
Yeah, it's rated anyway. It's already roll called, okay. Just read.
Okay.
President Scott. Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray.
No.
Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer. Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett.
No.
Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock, Robinson.
Yes.
Costello, both are no.
Stokes.
No.
Snead. Clark.
No.
Please note, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Pinkett, uh, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, and Councilwoman McCray. There's no, this bill is approved.
And, um, Mr. President, I, hit me down as a pass.
Oh, please note the Council Vice President as a, as a pass. Thank you. Uh, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four seven five, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, eight zero six Reservoir Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four two, Commercial Vehicle Parking Clarification of Scope. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
No.
Please note, Councilwoman McCray, as a no, uh, this bill is approved. Uh, committee announcements. Members, when you hear a committee, please proceed with your committee announcements for your committees. We'll start at the bottom of the page on the Transportation Committee. Councilman Dorsey.
Nothing for the Transportation Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council Vice President Middleton, uh, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, bill number twenty dash oh five three six, the Minority and Women Business Program, the interim extension, will be heard on, uh, this Thursday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty, at ten a.m. It will be a virtual hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee.
Yes, we will be having, um, a hearing on Legislative Oversight nineteen dash zero zero five nine, August nineteenth, at five p.m. Uh, for the monthly crime stats for Police Department. Uh, we will also, prior to that, um, oh, yeah, move, let me, let me move suspensions rule ten two, um, to announce a hearing.
Without objection, uh, we will suspend the rules to announce a hearing.
I'd like.
The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
I'd like to announce a hearing on Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three one, uh, Towing, Licensing, and Regulations for four fifteen p.m. Uh, prior to the other hearing on August nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Land Use Committee, Councilman Robinson.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August nineteenth, at one oh five p.m. On Bill twenty dash zero five one, this is a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-droom unit in the R eight zoning district located seventeen eleven Gilford Avenue. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill, will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, at one p.m. On Bill twenty dash five six zero, this is conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to, to, uh, four dwelling units in R seven zoning district with variances located twenty-four thirty-seven Madison Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Legislative Investigations Committee, Councilman Burnett.
Mr. President, I don't have anything for Legislative Investigations. If you have help, I'll, I'll wait for you to come back around.
Nope, help is good. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, on Tuesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, uh, the Health Committee will be hearing, having a hearing at ten a.m. on Council Resolution twenty dash zero one nine nine R, Investigative Hearing, Well-being of the Transgender Community in Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Labor Committee, Councilwoman Snead.
Yes, I would like to, um, announce a hearing for Bill twenty dash zero five six two, and that's the Baltimore City Police Officials Residential Requirements Bill. The date will be on Thursday, August twenty-first, at one p.m. And I would also like to, um, add that we'll also have a bill for eighteen dash zero one one zero R, and that's the investigative hearing for residential requirements for city officials. That's just our update that we do. And that's going to be held on Thursday, September the tenth, uh, twenty twenty, at one oh five p.m., and that will be a virtual hearing as well.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary Committee will hold a hearing on Bill twenty dash zero five four six, Natural Resources, Forest and Tree Conservation, on Tuesday, August fourth, at ten oh one a.m. This will be a virtual WebEx meeting. Uh, the Judiciary Committee, Committee will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, August fourth, at ten a.m. It's be a virtual WebEx hearing on Council Bill twenty dash zero five four zero. Correctance Streets, renaming Violet Hill White Way to Violet Hill White Way. It's just a spelling change. And finally, the Budget Provisions Committee will hold a hearing on.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, Councilman Stokes, you're good again. Sorry about that. Council, the Councilman had a, a technical issue.
No problem. Thanks, sir. Uh, Budget Provisions Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August nineteenth, at five oh one p.m. This will be a virtual WebEx, uh, meeting, which is follow-on to what Councilman Schleifer just announced. And this is L O nineteen dash zero zero six zero, Budget Oversight Hearings for the Baltimore City Police Department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Housing, Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be having a hearing on City Council Bill nineteen zero one seven three R, Resolution approving, uh, the exchange of a Class BD seven license on Route six oh four South Acton Street to a Class seven and license, uh, on Route seven, South Central Avenue. Um, that will be on Tuesday, August the eleventh, at three forty-five p.m., and it will be a virtual here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Executive Appointments Committee, Councilman Stokes. Oh, lost the Councilman again.
I'm sorry.
Hold on one second, Councilwoman. Um, uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
I just realized that for the second hearing, I gave the wrong date. Both hearings will actually be, um, on the, on August twenty-first at one o'clock, and the other one is at one, one oh five p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, can you state for the record again, uh, the total titles of those hearings for the public?
Yes, um. So, um, the investigative hearing residential requirement, that's eighteen dash zero one one zero R, that said, um, Thursday, September the, oh, sorry, Thursday, August the twenty-first, at one o'clock. And then the other one is, uh, Labor Committee, um, for the police residential requirement, um, for Thursday, August the twenty-first as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Stokes, Executive Appointments Committee. Uh, Councilman Burnett. No, sir.
Yeah.
I can, I can do with you if you need, need me to, Mr. President. I know you're having some issues.
Yeah, Councilman Stokes, we, uh, we can't seem to hear you, so we. Yes, we can hear.
Okay, well, um, the vice chair, he. Did you get it?
Yeah, I have to give all information.
Go ahead, um, Councilman Burnett, that's fine.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Chair. Um, the Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty, at ten a.m. to review the fol, the following nominations, uh, for the Board of Ethics of Baltimore City. Uh, Melody Hindiger, uh, member Eleventh District, in the Pavilion Review Board. Uh, Levi Zadlo, member Fifth District.
Thank you, uh, thank you, thank you. And gentlemen, that's how teamwork makes the dream work there on the chair. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Equity Instruction Committee, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Instructor Committee will meet on Thursday, September tenth, at twelve noon on WebEx to, uh, hear Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine six, Records Management, Modernizing, Collecting, and Confirming. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Education and Youth Committee, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just as a reminder, the Education and Youth Committee will meet on Wednesday of this week to discuss the plan for city schools, which we now know will be all virt, virtual, starting this fall. Um, and then to hear about plans to begin to transition after that. Thank you, Mr. President. That's at five p.m. on Wednesday.
Thank you, thank you all. Uh, regular announcement. I will start first. I want to, uh, say that everyone knows that I've been focusing, that focused as Council President about restoring accountability, bringing transparency, and improving our outdated structures in city government. Uh, tonight, we have voted to send to the voters the City Administrator Charter Amendment, which could bring Baltimore in alignment with all of our surrounding counties and most major cities around the United States. We have to professionalize city government, bring and follow the best practices so that our city government can be more efficient, more effective, transparent, and accountable. So I would like to thank you all, and we are hoping that the voters of Baltimore will bring Baltimore in alignment with all the areas around us. I would like to also say that, uh, I want Councilwoman, Council Vice President Milton, sorry, to honor a moment of silence for the amount of one hundred and eighty-four homicide victims in the city of Baltimore this year, and to further say that we cannot allow ourselves to be desensitized to these losses. We know that we're dealing with COVID, but we have to, we have to remain committed and remain busy and remain, uh, sensitive to the amount of violence that we're seeing on the city of Baltimore, streets of Baltimore. Uh, I have to remind everyone that these are people, not numbers. And it's very critical that we think about the range of the people that we're losing to violence and homicides in Baltimore City. Franklin Lassiter, age forty-nine, Louis Henson, age sixty, Fresca Yerby, age thirty-five, Sean Spann, age twenty-eight, Darius Avalon, age twenty-five, Devonte Curtis, age twenty-one, Michelle Tenaska, age eighteen, Shanaya Gilmore, age three, Kyler Moore, age one, and an unborn child. Those are ten people out of one hundred and eighty-four that run the gamut of ages of who we're losing in Baltimore, uh, including a child who never had the chance to have a life. We have to do more and focus our efforts in our city on the people protecting the violence. This is the needed work that has to be done. Having the necessary intelligence and a plan of action to remove those who continuously commit acts of violence with illegal guns from our neighborhoods must begin to happen now and will be the focus in the future. Uh, this refocusing, along with reimagining public safety and making investments into our future, is how we will see longstanding impact in our communities. We can do better in Baltimore, but the reality is we must do better, and I know that we will. I challenge us all to think about what we can do to impact the change needed for our city. But also, we know that we're dealing with something else simultaneously. We are still dealing with the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and COVID is on the rise in Baltimore. And in particular, I want to speak to the younger residents in the city of Baltimore. Uh, we are not invincible. You are not invincible. Please act accordingly. We have seen a spike with younger Baltimoreans. We do not yet know the longstanding standing health impacts of contracting COVID-nineteen. We have to be responsible, uh, with our lives and with everyone else's lives. Again, you might not get sick immediately, but you could pass that on to someone who might actually die. And as we're moving into, uh, the fall, knowing again that we're going to be seeing a second wave, we have to be more responsible. Everyone in Baltimore has to continue to wear masks, even when it, it feels like a hundred and seventy degrees outside like it was today. We have to continue to practice physical distancing. We cannot be gathering in bars and restaurants, being, uh, unsafe, and not wearing our masks. We have to stay home as much as possible. We have to wash our hands. This is not over by a long shot, and we cannot continue to have the numbers go in the direction of that they have been in the recent days and weeks. And lastly, uh, before I turn it over to my colleagues, I want to make. And lastly, uh, before I turn it over to my colleagues, I want to make one final statement. Our city is in need of many resources that our federal government can provide to help us and our state, uh, government as well. But I'm going to in particular talk about the federal government. Everything from infrastructure, housing, transportation, the digital divide, and dealing with the flow of illegal guns into our city are things that the federal government could help with today. Uh, sending federal officers to focus on something that does not exist is not one of those things on their list. What Baltimore needs is a real partnership in resources, not being used as a political prop to incite one place. Uh, and that is all I have to say this evening. Uh, Councilman Stokes? You're on mute, Councilman.
Oh, I want to just do a... Ooh, hold on. Hear me now? Okay. I just want to give a little sound for... Uh, Bill Henry, uh, Councilman Henry, which is S. Wade, eight... Well, seven term, uh, passed on, you know, and, uh, Wayman Henry.
Councilman Stokes, we, we lost your sound again. If you could text the Council Vice President the names that you wish to have, uh, or email them to her, that would be appreciated. Uh, Chair Recognizers, Councilman Henry?
I, I think he... I think he was, I think the councilman was referring to my uncle Wayman Henry, who passed away last week. Um, so I, I can address that when we get to, to my spot.
Go now, Councilman, you have the floor.
Uh, okay. Uh, well, I, I was actually, uh, I'm, I'm glad that Councilman Stokes, uh, raised that issue. This is, uh, uh, been a, a serious blow for our family, uh, the, the, the second of the Henry boys in a very short, uh, period of time. Uh, Wayman Henry, uh, was a, also a former city employee. He worked for a number of years in the city's law department, uh, under, uh, during Mayor Kirchsmoos' administration. Um, his, uh, children, Carla Henry Hopkins, my cousin, and Jay Wayman Henry the Third, John Wayman Henry the Third, uh, also my cousin, uh, they, uh, were fortunate enough to be with him in his final days, uh, and, uh, there will be a, uh, very small, safe, uh, funeral service, uh, in the near future at, uh, Wayman's Home Church, Beppo A. and E. Uh, he's, he's missed, and all of my words are insufficient to, uh, to speak to the impact he had, not just on his family and his church, uh, but on his community. And so I would ask, uh, the Vice President for a moment of silence for J. Wayman Henry Junior. And I, I also would, uh, ask tonight for a moment of silence for Tyrone West. Uh, we, uh, we have just passed the seventh anniversary, um, of Tyrone West's death in custody on July eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, during a traffic stop in northeast Baltimore. Um, its family has, uh, continued to make certain that, uh, its memory is not, um, is not lost, and that, uh, we continue to work towards, uh, having a police force that we should never be concerned with people dying in their custody. Uh, and, uh, that is, uh, an ongoing, ongoing work that, uh, Tyrone West's family has considered, continued to help the city with, and I expect will continue to do so, um, until we get to that better brand again. So, uh, thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I will, I will call my colleagues, you know, they're on my screen. If you have your video on, if not, I will assume that you have no technical announcement. Uh, Councilman Bullock?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just wanted to note, you know, again, the passing of, uh, Councilor, uh, John Lewis, who made his touch by his life. Um, I remember as a young man, as an intern on Castle Hill, the Preston side office, back in nineteen ninety-eight, and interacting with office, it was like a living museum, and saw all his struggle throughout the years, and was very kind-hearted and open to many of the young people. So, again, want to recognize his life and his presence.
Thank you. I'm, as I said, this weekend, the world, world lost vagina of a man, and for, for many of us, we know that we would not be sitting in the seat, uh, that we are sitting in if it were not for John Lewis having the audacity to challenge the system, risk his life continuously to break down barriers that we now stand on his shoulders, and I just hope and pray that we continue to make him proud as we move forward. Uh, Councilwoman Clark?
Uh, I'd just like to say that one thing I love about our, uh, virtual council meetings is all the kids, and always wondering whose kids are running around, and what a lovely kiss you just got, Councilman Bullock, and how lovely it is, and how much in the spirit of this council going forward to have all those little kids running around kissing your nose in the middle of meetings. How could we ever go wrong? Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to you, Mayor Young, Senator Antonio Hayes, um, Democratic nominee for the Seventh District, James Torrance, for supporting, um, an incredible event on this past Saturday, um, where we were able to partner with Ravens Andre Smith and Mark Ingram in distributing, um, about eighty thousand pounds of fresh produce to needy families throughout the city, actually throughout the region. Um, I just wanted to thank also Baltimore City Community College for hosting the event, um, the organization called TAP, Together Assisting People, um, Coastal Produce, Shop Right, Coca-Cola, Tappers, um, We Are Us, and Bowie State, um, Football Team, um, just all came together. There were so many families that were blessed. Uh, we know that during this pandemic and the economic downturn, that so many families are in need, and we know that, you know, mere food distributions won't address food insecurity in our city, but, um, at the bare minimum, people should be able to provide for themselves and their families, um, and be able to, um, eat fresh, healthy food. And so I'm, I'm thankful for all the partners, um, for an incredible event. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. Uh, Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just speak briefly to the announcement from city schools this morning, uh, that they will be opening, uh, virtually in the fall for all of our young people. Um, you know, we know that many children in Baltimore lack internet access, uh, may not have a digital device. Uh, we know that being at home is really tough for a lot of our parents and families. Uh, we know that unfortunately, in pandemics like this one, we see a rise in child abuse and a decline in reports of child abuse because there are less mandatory reporters that are available. That all being said, I believe city schools made absolutely the right choice. Public health must come first. Uh, like I said, we're going to be having a hearing on this on Wednesday at five P. M. where we'll hear from the school C. E. O., the, uh, Baltimore Teachers Union, Parent Community Advisory Board, students, and other stakeholders. And while we know that this is going to be challenging for all of our families in Baltimore, I ask that we pull together to support children as they endeavor to learn online for the beginning of the next school year, and that we do, you said, Mr. President, and really respect social distancing, keep our masks on when we're out, so that we can get to a place where schools can reopen safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Councilman, and I think that it's important to note, as you said, that we rally around our children and their families, because this is going to be an extremely hard thing, and we all are going to have to do more to make sure that our young people are not falling further behind. We have to do this as we, uh, work throughout this pandemic. Uh, Councilwoman, Vice Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, and I guess before I get into, um, the closing, I, of course, um, you mentioned, uh, the, a national person, Representative, uh, John Lewis, and, and there was also Reverend C. T. Vivian, two very prominent national leaders that passed away this week, and, um, along with, um, our local George E. Mitchell. And you know, uh, basically, um, I guess about three weeks ago now, I had, uh, talked about the Langston Hughes, um, Business and Community Resource Center, which was the former Langston Hughes Elementary School. And just a few things, added things about George. He, he also, uh, you know, set marks around his state, around the state. He was a graduate of Morgan State University. We, we both graduated in the same class, by the way, with, um, along with Kwai Sim Fumey. Um, he, this was really a shock to the community. We, we all knew that, um, George was a very hard worker. He, um, when he relocated back in his mother's house, uh, just to say, a look, he is definitely, uh, his mother's son. His mom was a very prominent, um, also a registered nurse in the community. She was a person that, um, was a strong union person that led her local, um, nursing union within, uh, ASME, and she, um, was a force to be reckoned with right there in, uh, Park Heights. Um, they named the street right next to the school after her. Um, and George moved back there and just really basically took over and started doing what his mother taught him. Um, start, when the school was in session, he basically started a after-school program, using his own money, didn't ask for anything, just started helping children from six, um, you know, during the hours of like six to eight, six to nine. Um, and then it, of course, progressed when the school closed and, uh, during the Freddie Gray, um, riot, he, um, they basically, and that happened during, as the summer, uh, progressed, if you, if you remember, some of you, they needed to still provide lunches, summer lunches. George volunteered to, uh, man that facility for the summer lunch program, and then it just kind of took off from there. He partnered with the police and kind of started his own officer-friendly program. And, um, from there, he had this vision and, um, with, uh, youth-formed Youth Educational Services, they have been operating, even though George was the C., was the C. E. O., that organization has been operating the building, and George was in the hospital for three weeks, and that center still, in those three weeks, they, uh, quietly still kept everything moving and still, uh, kept George in prayers. And I look at it as, um, George starting, he put a movement in place for that community. And, um, you know, he had health issues really that he never really talked about, and he just kept moving and working and moving, and, you know, he had this vision of that center just becoming a, a main hub for not just people in that community, but, uh, for the, for the entire city. And he, the city saves money. The things that are going on in that building, he has been saving lives and saving money for the city. And all of us have these places in our communities, and we, as, um, council people, should, you know, we know this, we know what we need in our committee, and we need to continue to do things. That's part of, that's part of our job. Um, this, this center has become an incubator for small businesses. It's a daycare there, it's, um, you know, business, uh, Park Heights is starting, at least, the southern side of Park Heights is also, uh, starting to get, uh, Latinos, Hispanic homeowners, right near the center. He brought in a volunteer that helped to, um, build that cultural, so they, we could educate, blacks and Hispanics can educate each other. Uh, and that has been progressing. Um, a young twelve-year-old came into that facility one evening when George was getting ready to close the building, and a, a young guy came in there crying, he was hungry. George stayed there and gave him a meal. He took food, uh, the, the young guy said, you know, my family hasn't had food in a couple days. He gave packages of food and took, and from that day, he, he, that's when he really started getting involved with the food bank. So, things that happen when people come past and in that, in that building for help, he just kind of extended those services and worked from there. So, he, um, you know, I noticed people all week have been posting just their, their personal experiences with George. Um, he has also been a dear friend, and, you know, he's been a long supporter of, of me, and, you know, all, everyone there, it's all about helping people, and this building has been just, uh, um, I just can't say it enough, a safe haven. It's going through the process, and I'm just thankful that he left, he left the, that organization, Youth Educational Services, in charge. They have been working tirelessly, and I, I stop by there periodically, and each one of them tell, you know, they tell stories of basically what, how George was acting a month before he got into that hospital. You know how some people, some, this, they always say that sometimes people know when it, it's a matter, we all have numbers, and I really think that George knew that he, it was a matter of time for him, just from things that, private things that he said, had said to me and other people that have started to share things. So, um, the process is moving forward, and, um, you know, I just hope that the activities and help that's going on in that building continues. It's so important. I know that the police department put up a wonderful post, a collage of their experiences with him as well, because, like I said, it was a, that building has a gym, and he started that connection with Officer Friendly, and Council President, that's one, that's another thing that we have to bring back, that community connection and education piece, and what, with the police department, the fire, he had a connection with the fire department. All those pieces, um, is saving that community, and, um, it, it's definitely, uh, an example of what we can do with other, um, I guess I want to say vacant or abandoned school buildings around our city. It's, it's something that we, as council people, have a control over, and we were put in office to push forward those types of things. And I know Councilwoman Clark can speak of, you know, in that era with that Paquin School, and, um, how that saved a lot of young African-American pregnant teenagers. So, this building is saving a lot of young African-American males and females. It's helping, um, the older adults, he has pro, the program in there for older adults. It's just, it's, it was part of his vision, and the organization that now is handling that building is going to keep that vision alive. So, um, he will, they do have something scheduled, I just want to announce that real quick. There's, he, uh, they're going to have a public viewing nearby at March Funeral Home on August the first, uh, from eleven to four. Um, and then there's going to be a memorial that Sunday, right there in the grounds on the... that Sunday, right there in the grounds on the, uh, baseball field from two to five. Of course, we're practicing social distancing and wearing masks, and, um, you know, it's just going to be a, a tribute. Um, most of his family were out of town. They're coming back. Um, and we're just going to, uh, celebrate George's life and, uh, just keeping his dream and vision alive. He was, he, along with, um, Representative John Lewis and Reverend Vivian, they were all men of character, uh, courage, purpose, and vision. And, um, George fits right up there with him as our local and state, um, servant, public servant. And I want to end on that. So, the next council meeting will be held on, um, Monday, the twenty-seventh, virtually. And also, we're going to have a moment of silence for, um, of course, Rep., uh, Representative John Lewis, Reverend C. T. Vivian, George E. Mitchell, Tyrone West, and, uh, Jay Wegman Henry Junior, and also the one hundred and eighty-four, um, uh, victims and their families of homicide and the continued opioid epidemic, and of course, our continued COVID-nineteen pandemic. And we, we can't say it enough, wear those masks, wash your hands, wear gloves when you have to, and stay safe and healthy.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the eighty-eighth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.